Did you unplug the light again?
Somebody unplugged the light.
Click it again.
No, it's on. We're on the air.
The September twenty-seventh meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board is called order at seven thirty-five. There's a few announcements. This is a work session. Uh, there will be, this is just a discussion among the members of the planning board concerning a few ordinances and concerning some elements of the master plan which are in draft form. There will not be open discussion from the public and there are no people in the courtroom, no citizens in the courtroom. So it's just us. You want to read the announcements?
Absolutely. Call the order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past ten thirty P M at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Number three, electronic devices. All in attendance are absent cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number four, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Committee man, right?
Present.
Committee member Lez is currently absent. Ms. Still? Mr. Hands?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Jones is currently absent, but will be joining us later, I believe. Mr. Malinowski is absent. Mr. File is absent tonight. Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here, here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a court.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is a discussion of the master plan elements and for that I will turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think, well, I know what we want to do tonight is we've got a number of draft recommendations for a number of elements. We have about four total, and what I'd like to do is first go through the element discussions, then we have two drafts of recommendations that are going to be incorporated into really other parts of the master plan, so we'll have a brief discussion on that. And then just talk a little bit about, you know, schedule going forward. So I guess first up, let's tackle the circulation element, which is one that we had, had a discussion, so this is a second review of the circulation, so I'll give everybody a minute to pull that up. And what I'd like to do is just, again, go through any, you know, obviously constructive comments that you have. Hopefully you've all had a chance to look through these, but we'll just kind of go through section by section. I'll ask Liz to help us with, I know we highlighted some things and we have some margin comments and a couple of places, just explain, you know, kind of our method to the madness is we kind of corral recommendations and hopefully solidify a draft here for each of these elements for recommendations. So.
Okay, yeah, sure. So if you have the document, you'll see the things that are highlighted in yellow. I think Tom Jones had taken a close look at the recommendations and I incorporated some of his comments to the best that I, you know, that I thought where I thought they fit best. And those are in yellow. So that's essentially everything that's different from what you've already reviewed.
Couldn't we start at the top anyway?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we just start with objective one point one, with the goals associated with vehicular safety, a key areas of concern.
One point one point one, bullet number two. It says, continue the practice, but to the best of my knowledge, we don't have a practice to continue. There might have been at one time, we have so many faded signs, especially no parking signs, that maybe it's time to reinstitute the practice.
So would you like to just take out, continue the practice of and just start it with audit traffic signage?
No, I, it, 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 there's about thirteen hundred traffic signs in town by the count that I made many, many years ago, and a lot of the parking signs are almost unreadable.
No, I think we know the conditions. I think it's whether we want, if we can attest that we're not doing it, then we can change the wording. Well, we haven't been doing it because we're using the word continue. So to your point, if it's not being done, then we should use a different.
Try to, try to verb other than change.
Well, I think the suggestion is audit, is just take out, continue the practice of and use the word audit to start that bullet.
How would I slightly modification? Because audit sounds like a one-time deal.
Okay, okay.
So, continue.
And the signage on the county roadways is the town's responsibility. All the speed limit signs and no parking signs on the county roads are the town's. Now, the county may have a few signs of its own, I don't know, but basically, those are the town's and the, the particular nuisance that I find is that on Valley Road, over most of its length, west of downtown, there are no parking signs and they are almost unreadable.
All right.
How about unsure regular auditing of traffic?
Okay, unsure regular auditing. And then what I'll do, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. All right, and then Dennis, why don't I say, contact the county regarding signage under its control or under its auspice or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. That's fine, that's fine.
It's not signage, it's, it's the county signage on the county roadways, if there is any. But we can't hassle them about all signs on the county roadways because most of them are the town's.
So why don't I damage another signage on, you know, under, I could change it to township control.
And then contact the county if there's anything under their control, something along those lines.
With regard to the third bullet, continue the review of roadway speed limits. Does anyone know the last time we changed a speed limit in town based on our continuing review?
Nope.
We lowered the speed limit on Carlton from forty to thirty-five about six or seven years ago, mostly due to a residential residence complaint, not due to any investigation we did because there's so little traffic on the street anyway. I don't see any harm in this, but I, again, this is not a regular review that needs to be continued. And the last thing we want to do is what the mayor has done in New York City, which is reduce every speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour.
No, twenty, twenty.
And then nobody goes, nobody goes, everybody goes.
Does the Long Island Expressway, does anybody get up to twenty-five on the Long Island Expressway?
How about, how about doing some relationship? Because I think some of the concept of the circulation was, let's wait until affordable housing has been completed, don't point it in a time in the future, as you say, we don't do it very often, don't need to. How about just say once?
How about just, how about continue periodic review of roadway speed limits?
I was going to say, how about doing a target and say, hold an audit at least after once in four.
Five years or something, I mean, if we don't change.
I could, I could make some reference about, you know, in light of, you know, all these multifamily.
Because we don't know what true intent is going to be, to agree.
So I think going back to the sentence, because all these bullets relate back to work with the township police too, so maybe it's to perform periodic review of roadway speed limits based on appropriate traffic standards.
Correct, because we're not working with the township police, right? This is all township police, or whoever's that's, yeah, I agree.
And the last bullet.
I'm just, I'm just, sorry, sorry.
Well, no, you're raising a good point. So we have the sentence that starts this list, the bullets, work with the police. That is, that is a good point. It's a little vague as to who's working with the township police, is that. Should it just be the township police do these things?
I don't know if Long Hill, if the township has, you know, is there anybody like on the, you know, on the governing body who's like in charge of public safety or something like that? Some towns have that, like public safety committee or something. You know, somebody who's, it's their job to sort of oversee things from a, you know, from that governing body, but, but maybe not.
I would not focus on assigning things to the township committee.
Okay, okay.
I would focus on statements that the township committee can direct to the paid staff to deal with. Because the township committee doesn't want to get involved in every nit that we throw their way.
Maybe work with is just something, some other direction to the police, if they're the ones who should be conducting these reviews and audits and whatnot.
How about just remove completely and just leave it as the bullet points?
Just.
And let the township figure out, who, who that applies to.
Yeah, yeah.
Bullet number four is much too weak. We have an ordinance on site triangles in the general ordinances, it's not in the zoning ordinances, and they have to be maintained, and auditing lines of sight is much too weak. Aggressively enforce those site triangle ordinance.
All right, so why don't we change that?
Enforce site triangle ordinance.
Uh, trying to get out of Division or North Field or, uh, or Birtwood into Valley Road is very difficult. Trying to get out of some of the side streets onto Long Hill Road is very difficult because the property owners at the intersection do not maintain. At one time, D P W a couple of years ago did some trimming of private property where the site triangles were in such bad shape, but.
All right, so I think we've got, so we can move on. So enforce these, the ordinance, so we'll reference the ordinance. Right, so we'll reference the ordinance, that same thing here, which would be helpful as well. Okay, objective one point two. Any comments with regards to?
I'm not sure how vacating paper streets is related to circulation. It may be a good thing for land use or recreation or something, but I'm not sure paper streets have anything to do with circulation.
Well, I think, again, this is all under the overall objective, enhance emergency access.
Well, paper streets aren't any good for emergency access. So we either got to pave them or get rid of them.
I think it's, I think it's appropriate, the circulation element. I do, because it's their roads, their town roads.
They're not town roads. They're artifacts of the tax map, but they are not useful for emergency vehicles.
But what, what about that one project that we looked at that was, you know?
Some of them do have access, though. They're not all wooded or.
Or what, isn't the D P W at the end of the paper street?
No.
Or not D P W, how?
No, D P W at the end of an easement.
But of a paper street, so is it?
No, no. It's an easement across private property, but it's a paved street, it's not paved. It's a paved street on an easement across private property.
Okay.
And we have a few of those, but if it is truly a paper street, like, for example, the little thirty-foot wide street off of Old Forge Road, Dogwood, that we encountered.
That's what I mean, yeah, Dogwood, but so who's, who owns that, various property owners?
No, no, that is, that is a paper street, it is owned by no one, under the jurisdiction of the town. Jack can give you a thousand words on this. But, but the answer is, it has nothing to do with emergency vehicles, it has nothing to do with circulation. It has only to do with a potential bike path.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and that does belong in circulation, because I think.
Yeah, but you're saying vacate.
On a case by.
Vacating the paper street only gives it back to the adjacent property owner.
Well, how about, instead of vacate, how about some sort of, you know, evaluate what to do with on a case by case?
Well, now, now you're, you're getting deeper and deeper into the hole. Why doesn't the master plan actually list the streets that they're talking about?
Yeah, because.
Why after twenty-three years are we now telling somebody in the future to evaluate?
No, I think you have to do that, because it's, or else.
No, we don't have to do that, Liz. It's a choice we can make.
Well, then the plan is going to cost a million dollars, because we're going to be spending all of our time doing study after study after study.
You and I could sit down with a map right now and pick out all the paper streets in five minutes.
Let's, let's move on. I think we bludgeoned that comment. We know it, we got it, we'll move on. All right.
So I have an issue Delaware Avenue. And we skirted around it previously because of the application, but we've heard strongly, I would say, the public, especially the neighborhood, how they do not want that. So now you're balancing local need or preference versus maybe township preference. I'm sort of on the local side at the moment, because I'm not sure if it's that valuable, any help to connect it. It looks nice symmetrical, I get the point, but I've never heard anybody.
Does it do anything? So let's start, let's break it down. Do anything to enhance emergency access to connect that street, those streets, based on where emergency centers are located and they have to get to.
Well, I would.
Would it shorten somebody's ambulance time to get to that neighborhood by coming up Morse Down Road and taking a left and getting to that neighborhood from?
As opposed to going a few hundreds yards?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking the question because that's what we're saying, is it enhances emergency access. If it doesn't do that, then.
I agree. Yeah, but wait a minute, you're confusing Delaware Avenue with paper streets. Delaware Avenue is not a paper street.
I've moved on from that comment.
Here's my point about Delaware then, would have been, was even, you know, I'm sure you can build it in a way that you can connect for emergency vehicles, as opposed to connect for food traffic. That would probably be my delineation. Make it accessible to emergency vehicles, but not a food street.
But then, I mean, I think, I think you, I, I.
We actually took that once, in the ladder truck, we actually went right through there to get to a, to get to a address on the other side, so you're, you're right there. The only problem is, if you make it accessible only for emergency vehicles, it was to say that somebody just doesn't do it.
Right, right.
Who's going to force that?
And then are you going to put a gate up and then you're going to have the key to the gate?
But no, 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 it's not that. I mean, you have signs and stuff and you can pick, all I'm just echoing is the vocal.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And again, it's a local versus township. I get all the good bits, so I'm very much, are we just for it? I've been mid.
Well, I mean, I hesitate. I mean, the other way to side set is should we just be silent on us and deal with it if it comes up again in an application, because presumably another application might come up for that property at some point.
Yeah, that's fair.
I've done one doing that.
Right, right.
I want to go with that man's being. How come I wasn't?
Are you, are you playing through?
I had to enter my car, it broke down on the parkway.
Oh, no.
How we doing, everybody?
We're here.
I had, was it too far from my office or one of my drivers gave you a ride? Are we live?
Yes.
Mr. Lees has shown up at seven fifty-five.
I, I, I could go on. I just don't think we should permit a food street that's regular traffic because of the residential complaints. So, if there's a subtle way.
Anybody else feel strongly one way or another of the Delaware Avenue?
I don't feel terribly strongly one way or the other. I think the answer to your question is, yes, it does make it quicker for emergency access, so I guess the question is four minutes worth it. Because it does obviously by four, however long, you know, make it quicker for the fire department to get to the upstairs, but it's, it's like.
There's never, there's, I mean, there's never a bad issue about time. I mean, emergency, three seconds is probably long, too long, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
But here, I think just say, put this be silent, maybe this is, because then it doesn't force the hand of either party when they come back and say, oh, the model man said this, therefore it becomes a bigger, harder argument for one side versus the other. Not saying necessarily sides, but you know.
What are we trying to accomplish here? If we're talking about emergency access.
And, and ease of vehicular circulation, so that was.
Are there any paper streets in town that have for emergency access? Is, is this a real issue or is this just guywash? For example, one of the paper streets in Millington is in hundred percent use by the Millington Fire Company. And it doesn't seem to have for their access, getting their trucks in and out, they use the paper street all the time. Is this a real issue? Are there any paper streets in town that have for access?
I think the paper streets are more about trying to do something constructive with them and maybe becoming, and it leads into maybe vacate some or. I thought we were in favor of doing that, so, so.
And if, and if that is the case in recommendation one point two point two, why are we only talking about Delaware Avenue when for years we've been talking about High Street and Old Mill Road? Why aren't they listed here?
Did Delaware Avenue come up in some specific?
It, it was in the nineteen ninety-six.
Oh, yeah, it has been there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And Old Mill Road is listed in the land use element that we saw a few months ago. I don't know why it's not carried over to this element.
I still have two minds about that one as well. And that's the one, so it's High Street, right, and Old Mill, off of Central, is that where?
No, no, no. High Street is one issue, Old Mill Road is the Millington train station.
Okay, 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 okay.
I don't know what you're referring to in the land use element. Can you, can you, be more specific?
It's that, it's that sliver of land that we've used the driveway that's built on state property to access our parking lot, and in the process, isolated Old Mill Road from the street network. That's probably the most glaring circulation problem in town, is because we have a street that you cannot reach on other town streets.
All right, so you want to move that one from the land use element here? That maybe makes more sense.
Well, I don't know. The committee is aware of this because the committee put it into the land use element back in Mayor June or July, whenever we saw the land use element.
Because we're talking specifically, right?
Yeah, so, but that maybe makes sense to put it here in the circulation, take it out of the land use.
Yeah, yeah.
And with regard to High Street, this is a nagging problem, I don't know. And you're smiling, David, come on, make a statement.
I go back, again, I go backwards and forwards on it. I live near, because, because where I am, winding way, we have one way in, one way out, Chester. So I'm sympathetic to a second, but I just get concerned about now the neighborhood destroying. But you've got all the houses up there, all of a sudden they become a food street, benefits me, but I'm just not sure if it's necessary. I don't know, I'm, I'm such two minds about some of these connections. It's altering the residential for what real? I know, I'm sure.
I, I think when it comes time to, you know, making it, making it through where you're not, if there's not a safety issue for fire, and it's, I always lean on the side of leaving it one way in and one way out, it's nice. They were looking to make my double call the Saks cut through at some point and retire. Again, that's just how I feel, as long as there's no safety issue as far as police or.
Well, there is a safety issue to the extent that when Chester Street floods at the low spot, then you need a high ground alternative.
Well, we just go to the sentence.
And that, that came up in great length back at the, uh, when we proposed building fields behind Central School. The neighbors complained about the additional traffic on Chestnut.
Correct, correct. Force you unfortunately with the cemetery there. So you can't bypass it. Not saying it's ideal.
You can get through?
Oh, yeah, they always do. They always block it off and then you get diverted into the cemetery.
All right. And I make a recommendation because we're gonna get off track here very quickly. So let's, let's, we've got, guys, guys. Sorry. Yep, sorry. Uh, my recommendation is we just, we reevaluate this particular section, objective one point two. I think there's some things that might be better suited in the land use settlement. Uh, or we bring the land use settlement into this particular recommendation. The, the, the paper street issue came up really more with the trails is trying to make connections, not streets, but better access to train stations, say around Gillette and some of the other areas that we were trying to do. And so that would probably be more suitable in open space and recreation.
Or we could put it down under making the township more walkable and vice versa.
Right, right.
You know, it, it, maybe it's in the wrong. So why don't we take out objective one point two?
Yep, yep. Because I, I mean, what I'm hearing is that there's, there's nothing that we can come up with that really presses urgency access or vehicular circulation associated with paper streets.
All right. So we'll, and then we'll move the township on Paper Streets down to under, you know, goal number two. And then Dennis with the Millington, the road in Millington, should we just keep it then in the land use settlement?
Yeah, I saw it in the land use settlement after you and I discussed it.
Yeah, no, I know. Do, should we just keep it there, do you think, then?
Well, I don't care where you, it's a circulation matter, but it also affects land use because it does involve the transfer of property. Unlike High Street in Delaware where the rights of way already exist, it's just simply a matter of making, uh, putting in the pavement.
All right. So why don't, I think with that one, why don't we put that all under goal one?
Yes, yes. I agree.
Okay, so that's, um, Millington. Okay.
Good. Did we want to mention Tom? History Tom has arrived.
And Tom Jones has arrived at eight oh two. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I thought it was eight, eight even.
I had it at one one.
We'll take the average.
Round it up to eight oh two.
Now, there are half the streets in Long Hill are either dead ends or cul-de-sacs, cul-de-sacs. And I know this because I counted them, uh, when we were talking about changing the garbage contractor and it involved backing of garbage trucks. Uh, more than half of those streets are dead ends, less than half are cul-de-sacs, but between them, half the streets in town only have one way in and out. Um, only have, the other half of the streets have two ways in and out from either end. I don't know whether that's a circulation issue or whether that's a good street planning layout issue. And you've read the manual on how to design residential streets. So tell us, is cul-de-sacs and dead ends a good thing or not?
Generally, they're not a good thing, but I think probably in, in an instance where you don't plan for them generally, but in an instance where they already exist, I think there has to probably be a compelling public safety concern in order to get rid of them. You wouldn't just do it, just to do it. But if you're starting from scratch, yes, you don't usually want to plan for cul-de-sacs.
Really? I thought they were beneficial and high property value. It looks like...
I, I can, I can find about a half a dozen cul-de-sacs in town which are not right-of-way cul-de-sacs. They're cul-de-sacs taken by easement from the property owner's front lawn. And the reason for that is there was an original intent to extend that street further and the cul-de-sac on the front lawn of the last property is only a temporary thing. We should identify those situations and figure out whether those streets actually can or should be extended or whether the right-of-way should, the right cul-de-sac easement should be made permanent.
All right. So write that recommendation.
A good example is, is at the end of Skyline Drive, which was originally intended back in the seventies to be continued to the, uh, north.
But I think, I think we want to do this though under one key parameter, especially with the flood hazard issues that we experience in town. If it produces a safety risk, I think that's gotta be one of the criterion with respect to access during flood stage issues. So that emergency vehicles can get access to that. That might be one of the criterion that the township really uses in regards to pursuing that otherwise, I, I don't see any problem with just a regular cul-de-sac if it's not, if its access is not hampered by some flood hazard.
Well, a dead end is, is a problem because it's a safety hazard. It means that garbage trucks have to back up and run over children to get to the intersection so they can turn around.
Not with all the beeping that happens when they back back out.
I agree with your point. Right. I think flooding should be a...
Yeah, yeah. So maybe, maybe that's how we look at it was because that, that even goes into some of the hazard mitigation issues, but I still think it should be in circulation in regards to a criterion used to evaluate that particular issue.
Okay, but that's going under objective one one. Okay. And it's sort of evaluating where two cul-de-sacs should be connected. Okay, okay.
Dead ends or cul-de-sacs, whatever term makes more sense. Okay, uh, we need to move on. So...
Not to quibble, but dead end to me is different to cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, I understand, but...
The cul-de-sac is supposed to have a turn, so...
Yeah, cul-de-sac had a return. So you can do a turn.
All right. So where two cul-de-sacs, um, could be joined, you know, to alleviate a public safety concern or something like that. Okay.
Well, where there is a dead end, consider is there enough land to do more of a safe turn radius?
Yeah, is that what you're saying, Dennis, is that there are dead ends that do not have that?
Have the safe turn radius for trucks.
Yes, but I would, I would say that of the dead ends in town, of the cul-de-sacs in town that actually are plotted as, mapped as dead ends, but have a cul-de-sac easement, there might be half a dozen or so. Uh, most of the dead ends are dead ends that predate the nineteen seventies. And some of the dead ends that only have two or three houses on them aren't worth worrying about. For example, Largo, uh, in David's neighborhood, has only got two houses on it. So you can't really put in a cul-de-sac. You have to go into the park anyway to do it. So, but there are some fairly lengthy dead ends that, uh, that might be considerable for that, for safety purposes.
To have a, to have a cul-de-sac or whatever. Yeah.
Should we avoid the word dead ends and find something that I...
Well, no, I, I wanna use it if it's...
I...
No, 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 no. I wanna use it because it's different. I think you're right.
If we can identify.
Yeah. And so, but, but I think a dead end, we wanna make it a cul-de-sac.
Yes, yes. All agree.
Not living ends.
Yeah, yeah.
Something that would be nonsense, sir.
Dead end.
Not living ends.
Okay, guys, so are we ready to move on? So we can, we've got a lot to cover tonight. So, goal two.
I'm at two point one point two.
Okay.
Does anybody have anything for one point one? Or good? Okay, two. Okay, what's the comment on two point one point?
My comment for one, two point one point two sidewalk plan is who pays? Do we know who has to pay to put in a sidewalk if there is none? And if there is no application before a board for a site plan? And the answer, I think the answer lies at the corner of Northfield and Long Hill Road. If anybody knows who paid for that sidewalk.
The corner of Long Hill and Northfield?
Yeah, that is done throughout the line, right?
Go ahead. Tell us about who pays for the sidewalks.
Well, I mean, right now it's a town.
Is the town prepared to put in sidewalks everywhere there are not? That's a general question that affects what the master plan is.
Well, you have to look at the map too because it's not ever...
But the other thing I think you, to have a map, because oftentimes where this happened with, say, what happened at the zoning board with Clayfield Road, where the board wanted sidewalks and they were, the, the developer was initially kind of resistant. Because why? It's just connecting. You know, but if you have an overall plan saying, well, we, you're gonna put your part of the sidewalk in and the next developer's gonna connect to that, then you have a plan in place.
As I recall that hearing on Clayfield Road, one of the suggestions was that the applicant pay for sidewalks on his neighbor's property.
Well, that was an issue that they, which they, you can't do, but I think even...
But could the town, could the town pay for sidewalks on the neighbor property in order to complete the connection to Valley Road? And that's, that's really a plan issue.
I say yes then. How's that? Let the town pay for stuff. Pay for other stuff. Why not pay for good stuff?
Because that lot is isolated.
If it's, what's, if the plan's there and it's a good plan, works towards the plan, and if the township has to pay for some of it, and it would be a...
Yes, go ahead.
I believe there's a plan right now to replace a significant amount of sidewalks in town at all, you know, at the township's cost. We have to pay for a lot of sidewalks that are disrepair.
You know, those, like main sidewalks, like on Valley Road or Main Street. And we're not talking about residential roads. We're talking about the main arteries in town.
Yes, yes.
Now, there is a, there is a certain resistance to sidewalks. And let me tell you an example that came up a few years ago. Your neighborhood.
Yep, yep.
Crossing Long Hill Road onto Pleasant Plains Road going north. On your left, there is a sidewalk between Long Hill Road and Stephanie?
And it's awful. The blacktop sidewalk you're talking about?
No, it's on the left-hand side. There's a sidewalk. It's a, I think it's a cement sidewalk.
If we're coming from here and the, and the, going uphill, when you cross Long Hill Road on the left, that's a blacktop sidewalk.
That's a blacktop sidewalk. Yes. However, it is on private, it is in front of private property, the corner lot owner.
I didn't know that.
And he has been challenged that he's responsible and, and there's hedges between him and the house because his house faces Stephanie. And Jay.
Correct, yes, yes.
And, and what he has said is, why should I have to shovel that within twelve hours after a snowfall? I don't use that sidewalk. It's only there for the convenience of the schoolchildren. I didn't put it there. My exit to the world is via Stephanie, not on the side of my lot that faces, it's loaded with hedges because I don't want to see the traffic on Pleasant Plains. So he just assumed that sidewalk taken out. Now, we can't take it out because they say schoolchildren are walking to Central School.
Well, that sounds like more of a town. The township does have a lot of sidewalks all around town.
No, the residents, the residents... There's a, there's an ordinance in effect, been in effect for about the ten, ten years that the homeowner, uh, is responsible for.
Well, that learning, a town council shovels our sidewalk.
Then I shouldn't, that, that...
It's underground.
What's the, please, please. There's no, there's no, there's no properties near the sidewalk.
Oh, oh, they did build those. Yeah, yeah. Well, town, yeah, town really, if it's town property, they, they, they...
No, no, it's not residential.
Yeah, but if the resident, if you're a resident, you have a sidewalk and it's only a small percentage, right?
No, I, I...
Now, the town, the town didn't pay for sidewalks on Main and Central. And on Central, those sidewalks are pretty expensive because they bend around trees. They're very convoluted. They go uphill and downhill. Um, but they're there and they were paid for by the town. But how many, how many more neighborhoods can we afford to...
Can you do me, actually, could you do me a favor? Can you look at the circulation, this plan, the, the map is included and see? You don't have to do it now. I mean, you could do it at your leisure, but I don't know. This is from nineteen ninety-five or six. And it's in black and white, which isn't helpful. Um, but it shows, you know, where their sidewalks are proposed or sort of, you know, recommended, I think. And it would be good to know, to have this updated. Meaning, has these sidewalks been implemented? Are they, do they still make sense in these locations? And rather than, you know, we're not talking about the whole town. I don't know if the sidewalk that you're talking about...
My, my concern is having sidewalks where you have a lot of traffic. That's where I'd like to see it. Not in the residential neighborhoods. You will find that there are sporadic sidewalks in certain residential neighborhoods and then none in other residential neighborhoods. I would like to see it on Valley. You're not gonna get sidewalk up on Long Hill. That's just not gonna happen. But on Main Street, on Valley, on, um, Division, um, even the one on Mountain, as far as, or at least to the train tracks where, so people can walk to the train. I mean, there's a, there's a pass one on the left-hand side when you're heading towards the swamp, assuming you cross over a track, which is all dilapidated. Um, I think it floods every now and then and when heavy rainfall. Actually, most people are walking on the sidewalk in the bike lane, uh, on the shoulder on the, uh, I wanna say that's the east side.
Right, but I think, I think to cut to the jet, I think what we need to decide as a board, is this something that should be a priority for the town to evaluate and to, to address? Is this nineteen ninety-six plan an updated?
Yes, that's always...
I mean, we're not gonna be able to do it tonight. We're not gonna be able to do it in any time in the near future. We're, we're setting this as this should be something to be focused on.
Especially if it's affordable housing.
Don, there is an alternative which we haven't faced up to. And the alternative is our plan is to stop fussing with sidewalks, period. That's an alternative.
I understand, and that's, that's your opinion. I'm just saying...
No, I'm saying it's, 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 yes, it's my opinion, but it is an alternative that we should consider in the plan.
But not tonight.
Why not? This is exactly the purpose of this work.
No, we're not gonna make that decision tonight. We're gonna make the decision that this needs to be a priority to evaluate that issue. We're not gonna sit tonight and take up the time to determine if we're gonna have sidewalks or not in town. That's not a good use of the time. And that's not what the objective of tonight is.
No, the objective of tonight is to make sure that the master plan is consistent with the thinking of the board. So that when it comes up, we won't have to have these discussions when it comes up for adoption.
And we're trying to establish if this is a priority that needs to be addressed in the coming years.
I for one love the idea of a plan. Anybody have a...
That is the plan. So...
So we've got, so we've got...
So can we move on? I think we can capture that. Can we capture that? That needs to be something to be looked at. We need to, I think this map is outdated. I see a number of areas that I don't even think it's feasible to do a sidewalk as we've established, like on Mountain Road and folk areas like that. But I mean, if you read on, you have actually the suggestion of an advisory group that would be formed to deal with many of these things in town. So let's, let's spare it. I think, good discussion to feed that, but not tonight. All right. Next.
Two point one point three. I don't see anything in here about the dogwood connection. Which we've talked about time and time again.
Okay.
I do see improves and studies and work with, but I don't see any, specifically the dogwood connector, which in fact has been engineered at one time in the past by the town engineer and, uh, was, uh, pretty much ready to go out to bid until we discovered how much it would cost. Well, is it a part of our plan? If so, we have to deal with cost.
So, so can we...
Again, this is again a goal that we would be working with this advisory group.
So the dogwood connector would be part of...
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could put that, I mean, it's up to you guys if we want to get that specific and put that actually in this plan. Are there other, is there other connectors than dogwood that we know of right now on the...
Don, as you know, cost will always be a driver factor and, and it may always be that the cost is too great.
Well, one of the things the master plan can do, one of the things the master plan can do is prioritize... can do is prioritize the expenditure of certain costs. We know that it's going to cost money to maintain the town over the years. Does the master plan want to put some priorities on that? Or do we want to leave everything up to future study groups?
This plan is identifying the things we are going to focus on and prioritize and study.
But Don, your, your thought is that the advisory group would take all these things into consideration, each individual examples that come, that are being brought up?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that would be a.
And obviously, cost will be a huge consideration.
feasibility, you know.
And then, and it's an advisory group that would make recommendations for the township committee.
At some point, we're going to get public input, and the public's going to come and say, you know what, I don't want dogwood ever touched, we'll give it for the input.
Right, right, exactly. Hi, how are you?
This, this, this is.
So this is, um, colleague, associate senior colleague.
No, no, but, but we want to see the real.
Yeah, right, right.
The beard has to go, like.
Let's, let's go.
Vett Flynn has joined us at eight twenty. He is an attorney who works with Steve Warner, and if he can sit patiently for a while, we'll finish talking about the master plan and then swing into ordinances.
Sure, sure. I mean, unless you want to take a break and, and address the order.
It's a little too early for break.
Well, no, I'm not saying a break, I'm saying that, so Matt can do his business and then leave.
Well, if, if, let's finish up circulation.
Okay.
While we're at a roll.
Great, what other comments do you have in the, uh, Goal Two?
Two point, one point four. Again, the question of who pays. Uh, two point, one point seven, conduct outreach with residents to identify new areas, where pedestrian, do we really need more outreach, or do we have all that information in the studies and surveys that have been made today?
I think that's again what we're setting out for an advisory group to really take into consideration.
So it's more about.
Is the advisory group the recreation committee, or the open space committee, or something new?
But in that, that group would take, would engage the public and take feedback, right? Good, okay, so maybe it's just the words spoken back at that point.
Okay.
Same, instead of conduct outreach, it would be engage the public.
Yeah, yeah. So you have, was on maybe that one we could.
Uh, two point, one point eight, encourage consolidation.
I just want to make sure, we did, we captured what it was?
Yeah, so engage the public.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, yep, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry.
Two point, one point eight, encourage consolidation driveway openings. Yeah, that's pretty obvious, and the county will make us do that, but do we have any example where that has failed in town? We've got more successes than failures in, in this regard, and I think whatever we're doing now works.
Great, well, let's keep encouraging it.
What are we doing now? What are we doing now?
We've got a library, a town hall, and a rec field that share one driveway.
Oh, but that, that's not what this is talking about, commercial properties.
All right, we got, we got the two shopping centers at Valley Mall that use the Valley Mall entrance, as well as the Burger King. We've got, we've got good examples of how this works.
Okay, so.
So I'm not sure that, that it needs encouragement, other than just leave it alone because it works.
Continue, like, continue, the consults, continue.
Well, does every, does everything that works in town need to have a statement in the master plan to continue it? I mean, this is just one example of dozens of things that work.
Well, the only way to keep it visible is to keep it in black and white.
I don't, it, it doesn't injure the plan, right?
I think the idea is like.
It's not a bad thing to point out some of those things.
I thought you were in favor of this, Dennis. I meant, I thought you were in favor of this, I think of meetings from many years ago.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm in favor of it, but I'm not sure it's a master plan item, it's something that we do routinely, and it works, why isn't it a master plan item?
I think this was in the land use zone as well, with sort of, sort of the kinds of design guidelines that people thought would be appropriate along Valley Road. I think it's not bad to have it be something that is like, something that you prefer. You prefer this, that rather than there be a bunch of different concepts.
Yep.
Agree, agree.
Yeah.
Agree, agree.
Moving on.
Two point, one point nine, I'm not sure that bike racks at train stations are an item from transit. It seems to me that the, uh, reason that we charge parking permit fees and accrue it in a township trust fund for station improvements, it isn't the town's business to put in bike racks.
Well, let's give it the old college try, see if we can get out of transit, they've got some money.
I think that New Jersey Transit does put a lot of bikes and racks at their stations, so we should absolutely make sure that that continues to happen.
I think that has some formula, it makes some ridership.
Yeah, and then with, with the green initiative, that's going to be more of a, or sustainability, that'll be more of an incentive to keep that, that, keep that going, plus that boosts ridership.
Right, right.
Yep, yep.
I'm not opposed to bike racks, I just think that the recommendation that we blow this off of transit is a, is a step in the wrong direction.
Coordinate, coordinate with New Jersey Transit.
That means interact, have conversation.
Exactly.
I could assist.
Recall, we have a whole enhancement to our train hubs in coordinating with New Jersey Transit in the land use zones. This is really just a.
Because you know what that goes to, that talks about the pathway for Central Park, it opens up that conversation, keeps that engagement. It talks about the unfortunate incidents that took place down here on the, on the East End, keeps that engagement going.
Exactly. Okay, uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, New Jersey Transit's getting a lot of funding, so, I was trying to take advantage of it.
Two point, one point fourteen is my next item.
Yeah, we highlighted this.
I highlighted it because it's new. Um, because there were some technical terms that Tom used, I just wasn't.
Yeah, this is one of the things we integrated from Tom, great work, so.
Which was the edge line, I didn't know what that meant, so I had to look it up.
Which, which one you didn't know?
Edge line.
Oh, the edge line line?
I just didn't know that.
I had to Google in order to put it in there and figure out what that was, too. It can be very slippery in the rain if you're not careful. So what's the issue with that?
Hmm?
What was the issue with that?
Uh, in two fourteen, I'd just like to add, such as Morris Town Road.
Do we need to put examples?
This is an example of, of the kind of road that would be amenable to being identified as appropriate.
You know what we can do, rather than put that in the text of the recommendation, we can have photos with, with, you know.
Desired outcomes, right?
Yeah.
I like that. Photos worth a thousand words.
I got shadows in there. That wasn't easy.
All right, anything else?
Well, two point fifteen, along Valley Road and other county roadways have pedestrian amenities. I think we have that already in the land use ordinance, where we're going to give, uh, coverage credit for pedestrian amenities. We put that in, uh, in two thousand sixteen with the Valley Element, and we haven't had anybody come up and say, hey, I, I'm going to put benches in, what do I get in return? It hasn't worked for six years. But, and, and I don't see that the county is involved, because those amenities would not be in the right of way, they'd be on the private property, and there's a trade-off that we've been encouraging, not very successfully.
Is it the exact same language, or is it different in the land use?
It's actually, it's, it's different. Uh, we have in land use has to do more with private property. This was having to do with if, if things were in the right of way.
So, so this statement here, as I read, is again, to foster conversation with the county to keep, to, to try and work to get these things.
Correct.
We may not be, we may never be successful, but unless you, if you don't ask, you don't, you never know.
Well, if we do put in, uh, transit stops and shelters, does that mean that bus routes will come?
There's already a bus route going down Valley Road and connects to train stations.
Yeah, a number of those stops don't even have a shelter.
That's correct, and one right across from the Valley Mall doesn't have one. There's another one over by, uh, over here, but the traffic light doesn't have one.
But again, let's not get bogged down in the details. I think the comment is, we want to keep this front and center and work with the county in these particular areas.
Uh, I'm sorry, Don, I don't consider putting details into a plan to be getting bogged down. You and I may disagree on that, but a plan has to be a plan that's going to lead us somewhere, not, not.
We're just trying to move, if we're all in agreement, we're trying to move along, okay? Any other comments with regards to the rest of the, I don't know, we have one last thing that was highlighted, again, something that was added. I thought this was a good thing, I'm seeing this in a lot of towns, especially in pedestrian crosswalks, that are super dangerous, have flags that people carry across the street. You know, the one, the one there in front of the Gillette School always concerns me, and I know the tops do, the police do a very good job of patrolling that and cutting the traffic speed down there, but that's.
You're coming down that hill.
Right, right.
Yeah, we've actually discussed this, uh, for a couple meetings, and the town committee were in favor of it. Uh, it just seems to be the issue of paying for it right now, but it's, it's something, it's inexpensive, and, uh, certainly will be in next year's budget if you don't get it done this year.
Right, right, sounds good. Okay. Good, good. All right, I think we're ready to move from circulation, and maybe we move.
Okay, let's take the, take the switch now and deal with the, uh, ordinances that are before us. So Matt, man, uh, here, Matt, man.
No, I definitely do not want.
You could be sitting up here by me if you.
I, next, next.
I, I, as I said in my, uh, distribution to all of you last week, I think these are fairly cut and dry, but let's take them one at a time. Does anyone want to discuss Ordinance four ninety-eight, which is the redevelopment plan for the car wash site?
My concern with, I think it's been amended, with making sure the township committee heard what we said about Extended Stay Hotels, and that's been amended, I think, after that point.
Extended Stay Hotel was four ninety-six, that's old, that's old business, and I sent you some stuff later on today that there was one, one oversight.
It's right, it's right.
We're talking about that one, aren't we?
Huh?
This is, this is, this is the former car wash site, this is definitely.
Four ninety-six was Valley Road in general, four ninety-eight is the car wash site redevelopment plan, and that had a thirty-page attachment to it, Jessica wrote. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that?
I have just one thing.
Use your mic.
Okay, just one thing, I, you know, it's, it's a large lot, and there, the regulations allow for a lot of flexibility. I didn't know if you would recommend, I'm just bringing this up, a floor area ratio cap. It's not necessary, I mean, there may be, um.
I don't, I don't want to speak for Brendan, because he encouraged us to declare that an area in need, but as I understand it, the developer of the assisted living has a number of sites in mind, in focus, and so we have attempted to expedite this in order to encourage him to choose us. And so I don't want to put any additional restrictions on it.
I would also add one thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Use your mic.
I would add one thing, the other problem with that is, um, if you get into imposing use requirements, such as an FAR requirement, the re, uh, the redevelopment plan actually strips the board of granting any D variances, so you run the risk of.
That all the other D variances are as planned. There's permitted uses, there's, there's all, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, that doesn't.
Sorry, what's an FAR?
A floor area ratio, it just has sort of the size of the building, the, the plan has permitted uses, it has additional uses, it has that sort of thing. So, all of those things, Matt is correct, though, that the way this works, if, if something is deemed to be a D variance, because this board doesn't appear D variances, the plan has to be amended. It can't go to the zoning board, it can only come to the planning board. And so if there's something that would be typically under the auspice of the zoning board, the plan would have to be redone. It can't just go and get a variance.
In any event, the only reason this is here today, before this board is determined whether or not the redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan, and I think it's clear that it is not, because it permits a use that is not a permitted use in the master plan, so I think it's a fairly straightforward decision, and anything else that we may want to add or subtract from the development plan itself, uh, is a matter for the township committee to consider. And I.
Well, we're, we're, we did this as an area redevelopment, so that's something we need to discuss. I just, that's your point, just, in this.
And you've all seen the proposed response from this board to the township committee, that it is inconsistent, and we have, you know, we encourage it, because, uh, we, we're all in favor of redevelopment, but at this point, the letter of the law, it's inconsistent.
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay, okay.
Do we need to vote on these, one, both, or do we want to do that?
We'll meet a resolution to forward this finding to the township committee.
But it's not a resolution, the board, the board votes, and then we'll send the letter that it's.
So you need a motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, so moved.
On which ordinance?
Four ninety, twenty-two.
Four ninety, forty-two.
As referee, so.
As referee.
To make the changes. I, I second your opinion, did you, whether.
Okay, okay. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Um, Mr. Hands?
Yes, yes.
Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Committeeman Melissa?
Yes, yes.
Miss Till?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes, yes.
And Chairman Sando?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Vic, we have, uh, Ordinance four ninety-nine, which is, uh, a change to the outdoor dining regs from prohibiting outdoor music and amplified sound to permitting it until nine o'clock at night. And our, again, the question is, is it consistent or inconsistent with the master plan? And I don't think the master plan has ever made a statement about music and outdoor dining.
So it's a not inconsistent.
However.
No, I, I just realized there's a typo in this letter, so it is the, um, third to last sentence, or second to last sentence in the second paragraph. It says, the master plan documents do make, and it says you don't make.
Don't make.
Fix it.
Okay.
However.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, so that's, that's the only thing.
My issue is this is not even why we're even addressing now. We talked last time about having, we're going to look at this in general. I, I, my fear is we just send this, and then that's the end of the subject, as opposed to, maybe we should be looking at it, because I don't agree with what's been written anyhow. It's too poor blush, nine o'clock, so it doesn't define where nine o'clock applies.
When, what day of the week.
Right, so, and what levels of, there's, there's that ordinance, as we know, there's the, uh, model, model, uh, ordinance for this. So I'd like to make it more thoughtful, because my concern is that we just say yes, and that becomes it, and township committee just accepts what's accepted.
The township committee will have to hold a hearing on this, as which members of the public may object.
But I, I would suggest we do a more thoughtful response.
Does this rise to the level, since we've been talking about the master plan and making sure it's captured there, so that.
No, I, I, it sounds like it's something more urgent than that, personally, yeah.
Now, at our last meeting, I did get a couple volunteers for an ad hoc committee to consider this as a broader issue than just a slapshot for one restaurant. to consider this as a broader issue than just a slapshot for one restaurant, one occasion. And as fast as that committee can do some thoughtful work and resolve it, then we'll go back to the township committee with a broader scope ordinance than this.
Mm-hmm, that's a good recommendation. So I can support that.
I'm not happy with the ordinance.
No, no.
Unfortunately, at the time that I proposed that, that we put together a committee, I was operating on the basis of the fact that the first township discussion of this said, "Let's refer to the planning board." Uh, then I said, "Let's form a committee," but they never did refer to us. And they, in fact, introduced their own ordinance, which was put together by Jessica, which simply did a flip-flop from prohibited to permitted with a time limit. And that may not be the right solution to the problem, so I think we should continue with our own investigation of what is the right way to go.
Do you want to capture that in the letter?
Yes.
No.
Why not?
I think so. I, I don't want this to go forward and not have some...
No, I don't, I do not want the township committee to think that we're, uh, trying to outcast them. They want us to study something, they'll tell us, otherwise we'll study what we have to.
But they made that comment in a meeting, and they, and they even said, "We'll send it to the planning board."
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but they didn't. They sent it to Jessica instead.
But what is written is really poorly written. What can I tell you? I have not agreed since nine PM, have been a cutoff at some weather, it's not near residential. Because it's, who's going to have outdoor, no, at a restaurant, and nine PM to cutoff?
From my point of view, the fact that the board is studying it is irrelevant to the question of whether or not this particular ordinance, 499, is inconsistent with the master plan.
It's inconsistent with general logic. What can I tell you? So what do we do? Do we say, "That's all good, and it just, it all goes away, and we never look at it again?" Or we actually say, "Let's give it a bit of time to look at something and then come back with something." And maybe we come back and say, "It's nothing any worse or different to this," maybe. But I'm not going to rush into something just because of some plank statement from the township committee.
And I, and the noise model, which, uh, you've looked at, I've looked at, there's a lot of good stuff in there, and none of that is covered in the three bullets of the ordinance that was written by Jessica. For the three amendments, for the three statements that she put in there.
We, do, do you want to come close to recommending to the township that they not adopt this ordinance? Do you want to come close to doing that on the basis of some future?
Yes.
Or do we want to just let them go ahead and solve this one problem?
Doesn't solve a problem. It makes no sense. What can I tell you? If I should do something, it makes no sense.
And that discussion about noise went further than just music. They also talked about ATVs. And that's why looking at the noise model is even better option, because it's not just addressing one issue, it's addressing multiple issues. And it comes with a concrete, uh, assessment and proper thought, instead of just writing seven words for three different lines. So I would not even vote for this. I would abstain.
I would, I would.
You want to propose how to word this so we don't offend anybody?
I'm not trying to offend anyone, I'm trying to do what's right and find a balance.
Yes, I know.
So I would like to go and do a proper assessment and come back with some proper language. Not just two weeks jammed down my throat and then trying to spit something out the other side.
Liz, can you put some words together that say the town, the planning board recommends holding off on this until we can come up with a broader solution that also includes ATVs?
And it's not just ATVs, it's live music, there's, there's a lot there.
I think it's important ordinance. I really do. I, but I do think that we should weigh carefully and, and, and make the right decision, not just have a broad stroke. I'm in agreement, but I definitely think it needs to be looked into and something needs to be...
So give us a time, right? Give us a time, no, we say a couple, whatever, program, a couple months maybe, but no longer. To come back, is it going to hurt anybody?
It was meant to last two weeks digging up information, and now we've got to digest that information. And then we have to make a call to this group, and this group's going to want to have a conversation about it, the public's going to want to have a conversation about it. Yes.
I, I mean, just in today's world, I think it's important with, you know, outdoor dining, however, we do have neighbors that we need to consider. We also want to promote, you know, and help the restaurants, businesses, downtown, there's a balance.
And there's training involved, right? There's a, there's a tool involved, right? If we're going to just let it be, uh, subjective, huh, kind of sounds like, it doesn't sound like. You've got to know meter, metering to be calibrated, the person has to be, who's going to do it? Is it the police that's going to do it? It's all of that that needs to be considered.
I, I, I agree.
You know, are you going to have live music during the week, only on Friday and Saturday? Is it, is Friday and Saturday going to be an exception or a permit base that's going to go till 10 o'clock?
Right. Do you want it on Sundays?
Could be Sundays, Sundays only till six.
Right, right, no, I agree.
So I say, I think, I think what the board still has to do tonight, though, is the board still does have to weigh in on the consistency question. So, I mean, one way that I've seen this done before is a report from the planning board that says, "Well, the board does find that it is not inconsistent with the master plan, however, the board has these concerns about the ordinance itself, because the board still has its statutory obligation to weigh in on consistency." And it looks like the governing body at the bottom here does want to try and hold a, a second reading on October 26th. So the board should make some sort of finding today and, um, to, to the extent to which there's some additional language that gets thrown in, I think, you know, it would be appropriate.
Yeah, I agree.
We've actually got time to consider this again in our next meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, I think I appreciate what my, you know, my, my suggestion, because there's something on the books right now, uh, that we've basically, uh, we're not, we've said that we're not enforcing. And so we'd like to at least amend it so that the venues in town, uh, that are, that have live music, they can continue and we're giving them guidance. And it seems like nine o'clock is a, is a good time, uh, for, uh, you, because whenever we look at where, where the, the, uh, music is played at, is near residences and so on, nine o'clock seems to be a decent time. So we're just trying to get something here on the books right now. We, maybe we can amend and change whatever bound the road, but I think my suggestion makes, would, would make a lot of sense for tomorrow. My concern is that we're down the road and we just forget about it and nothing happens. My concern is we're not disciplined, because the ordinance, the model says, if the commercial property's but residential, then maybe one time frame, EG9111. If it abuts other commercial or other zones, non-residential, then ten o'clock may be appropriate. It's, it's that type of thing, just a little bit, I, I don't want to...
And I think with the specific issue.
I don't want to...
Yeah, right, Brendan?
Because it's, because it's...
Yeah, I mean, basically, if you have a restaurant on Valley Road, they can go a little late.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, I mean, uh, again, that's something that we can take down the road, or maybe it comes off in public comment. We're doing a bit of a right now, just for the purposes of the, uh, consistency with the master plan, I think it's... And no problem with the consistency, but with the follow-on add-on, and I appreciate that we're getting to this in the next ordinance, that Jack did read out our comments from the previous ordinance review. So as long as that's taken on board by the township committee, and we say, "Look, maybe we will like to address this sooner than later." Couple months, three months, whatever it is, we'd like to propose something a bit more, a bit more thoughtful.
Yeah, meanwhile, we're trying to do something. So am I here to move forward with, with the concerns to be addressed?
I think maybe what we could say is that you recommend the township adopt this, just...
No, recommend, do you want to, you know, in a...
Well, I think it's consistent, but then I think you, you not oppose the adoption in the short term to get this on the books, knowing, listen, we have some recommendations to, uh, you know, broaden this, or, I'll come up with something.
Priority recommendations.
To, to, to flesh this out a little bit, but let's get this on the, on the books, just to satisfy what I think there may be some other...
Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then as long as the township committee takes that on board and say, "Look, hey, good, now we know something else is going to happen, and not just put it to one side." I've, I've, it's got to be done here in the first place.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Brendan, you hear what we're saying here, and we're not...
Oh, boy, I 100% understand what you're saying.
Two weeks, we just trying to...
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, we do not have to vote on this because we've still got time before the next township committee meeting. We can still talk about a revised response on our next meeting. And I would propose we do that, we simply table this discussion until we see a new draft. And Liz, if you would put some words together and run it past Tom and David, and see if we can come up with something for the meeting two weeks from now.
One, one other little typo in the subject line, we have outdoor diving venues. I think that's supposed to be dining venues. I don't know how many outdoor diving venues we have that make a lot of noise, do we, Brendan?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm here, the, uh, the width is crazy.
Yeah, you know, when I dive, I make a lot of noise.
Sorry, can I, I'm now a little confused. So are we not submitting this letter now? We're going to wait.
This is, this one, although I packaged all three of these ordinances together for tonight, this one, the 35-day timing takes us to the next township committee meeting. So we've got one more opportunity to get involved.
So, um, are you suggesting that, um, David and Tom come up with some language for, to flesh out this ordinance by...
More about recommendations from us?
Yeah, yeah.
So they, so they, so it's not just a blanket statement that really got, getting a little merit, that we're coming back to something, create something more realistic.
And just like you did for the last week, the other discussion in the next ordinance, where you went back with some concrete comments.
Okay, so, you'll get it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on it next couple of weeks, if I can come up with some, for discussion. And then hopefully come back and say, "Here's a few other things to consider."
Thank you, thank you.
The final ordinance for discussion is, um, 501, amending the sign ordinance to measure setback from the curb rather than from the property line. Presumably, any sign that exists now is what it is and is further back from the street than it would have to be under the revised ordinance. This will give us the opportunity to allow new applicants to move their sign closer to the curb.
Okay. So where, where does it say this, where's the amendment? Is this, is this, I just see it's crossed out in the last sentence.
Oh, the last sentence is a site plan waiver issue. We killed site plan waiver committee in 2018, but apparently we forgot to take this line out. We killed a lot of lines, and this is the last of cleanup. And as long as we're rewriting that section of the ordinance, we may as well take out the garbage.
But then we should, why don't, why don't, it says, shall be minimum 10 feet from any curb, what was, what was that, what was that again?
Second?
That, that they're recommending that that be changed to curb line, it was, I think, lot line?
It's, it's right now with the front lot line, we're going to move it to the curb line.
This is what they, uh, passed on, just to show the change in the text, change, change text.
We've got some, we've got...
Yeah, that's, that's fine, it's figured out, it's fine.
Township made six feet closer to the ground.
We've got some properties where a strict interpretation of the ordinance would put the ground sign inside the building. So by moving it to 10 feet from the curb rather than 10 feet from the property line, we bring it out. Uh, there may be a couple of places in town where it matters.
Okay, okay.
Um, but I, it's, it's, since the master plan does not deal in signs at all, simplistically speaking, this is not inconsistent with the master plan.
So we need a motion to accept this, can we?
I, I might, I might accept this, right.
A second?
Mr. Hands?
Second was Mr. Verlisa. Thank you, sir.
It was? I thought I heard Mr. Hands. Wait, Mr. Hands made the motion. Okay, okay, okay.
Victor, second.
Okay, okay.
Committeeman Veleza?
Yes.
Okay, okay, second, very good. Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Miss Till?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes, yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Very good.
Okay, at this point, it's almost nine o'clock anyway, so let's take a break for a few minutes. And we'll come back and deal with the rest of the master plan issues in seven minutes.
Dennis, can I just take a second? I, I, there's a four, the other one, under old business, is that what you're going to do?
Second?
The 496 one, was that going to be under?
496 is, is a dead issue, we did, we finished that last meeting.
I, I know, because everybody knows what is the main thing. To this, this communication, it's very, very...
I sent, I sent you a copy of what we sent to the town, and you got the, the revised ordinance is in the minutes, are the agenda for the meeting tomorrow night. What more do you want to discuss?
No, and I put the letter, the, the letter that went to the township committee in the actual minutes from your meeting. In the language, like in the...
That's my, that's my, is everybody aware, uh, uh, we, we, we sent, we responded back on the last meeting. And I watched the meeting, Jack Pidgeon mentioned it, but it points to what we said. Other than extended stay hotels, that was a concern to me at least, because we said it and it wasn't spoken to. And that has now been amended thanks to Dennis.
We took, we took, we, we had to take extended stay hotel out in five places, Jack only caught four of them. David caught the fifth. I wrote to Jack and said, "Take it out the fifth time." And, uh, that'll be handled verbally tomorrow night.
Great, great.
Just want to make sure I believe in you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good catch. All right.
Okay, now it's five minutes. Six, five minutes.
Fighting for me is back in 905. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we are back with regards to now recommendations for the community facilities element. So if you pull up that document electronically or if you have it, hard copy. This is a short element. It's always been a fairly short element historically. Are there any comments with regards to the community facilities element? Again, this is for facilities that are essentially operated by the township. Not to be confused with what would be in the recreational element.
The green highlight is just because Samantha commented on it. And I think I had initially said, is this still, is this still relevant given recent years? And she said she recommended leaving this condition in place, but that was why I seen it. And then the thing in yellow is because I thought that this recommendation actually somehow tied into the parks and open space recommendation element.
Let's take this one at one time. 1.1.2. Does anyone believe that there's any room, hope, or money for improving the DPW plot?
It's always a possibility.
Yeah, keep in mind, you know, again, this is a 10-year plan, so let's, we have to sometimes...
Yeah, but if you look at that tract, and I'm talking now about a plan.
Thank you.
I'm talking now about a plan. If you look at that tract, it's surrounded by development and wetland. There is no way that a cogent plan could expand that facility.
Sure there is.
You can reapply, move things around, shuffle things around a little bit, but expanding would seem to be not a plan.
What would happen if the DPW decided to take over the community center because the community center is going to be put elsewhere? That's a possibility.
Do you want to write that in the plan?
I don't have to. There's a possibility of expanding. That is a possibility.
Well, I mean, this particular recommendation is focused on the existing location, so I think we have to...
Interesting.
You're talking about something that may be a little bit different.
They said the possibility of expanding the public workforce.
At its existing location.
Is that something we wanted to vote resources to or have we got more important things to think about rather than expanding DPW? It's not a great...
Victor, yeah. We have made significant improvements there. We are in the process of continuing to making significant improvements which need to be made at DPW. But I don't think there's any, that's a large space. I don't think there's ever gonna be any real need to expand it. The footprint's large, which there needs to be improved. That's my opinion. I believe that's the general assessment.
So are we in agreement to consider striking this altogether?
By this particular... To improving. That hurt?
Well, it sounds like improving is in motion, so I don't know if it really needs to be in the plan if you're already making improvements to the facility. This is about expansion of the footprint of the facility.
I think that's right.
It's interesting that you mentioned community center because that 1.1.4, I have that note, community center.
I didn't read that part yet.
Okay, so we're...
That's by a dedicated township facility to house recreation programs. That's what the community center was booked for 35 years ago.
Okay, so just to go back, because I just wanna preface one thing. Is that this element was adopted in 2017 by this board and this recommendation was in it in 2017? So it has, things have changed in the past five years to remove this recommendation?
I think the consensus is to remove.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think you said the sale of the sewer and stuff.
It changed.
It changed.
Okay, okay.
But there still is an opportunity to expand because the gun range is there. And if the gun range were to move, that would be town property and that could possibly become DPW space or it could become American waters.
Again, Victor's statement is, I'm hearing that there isn't the need for expansion and you don't see a need over the next 10 years. That's the hard part. This plan is to encompass a 10-year horizon.
Well, I'm not an expert on DPW, but I have seen two others and the footprint that we have is a size footprint. Just needs to be, what's there needs to be improved.
Gotcha.
Brendan, would you kind of agree with what I'm saying?
No, no. So we strike it.
Okay, that's fine. Now, the next one I think Dennis wants to bring up 1.1.4. That also was in the plan that it got adopted in 2017. I think it probably makes more sense in the open space and recreation element. You're saying, do you want me to, it's a little bit rewritten from what was in 2017. You want me to read you what was in 2017?
No, no, I'll go back and find whatever we approved in 2017. I don't recall. Was it a community facilities element or was it something else?
This is the community facilities element.
In 2017, okay.
Yeah.
So let's consider moving that to the recreation.
Yeah, I think it's more, makes more sense there.
We'll make one change anyway.
Yeah.
Any other comments to this short list of recommendations for community facilities?
Objective 1.1 at the top of the page. I wish there were another way of writing it so it didn't seem so obvious and condescending. Hey, guys, continue to do your job. Maintain good condition. I mean, that's what we hire the town hall staff to do, is to make sure that all our facilities are maintained in good condition. Try the condescending to tell the DPW manager and the town administrator, keep doing your job. And we're gonna ensure that you keep doing your job by putting it in the master plan.
I think it's condescending.
It's just a priority. We consider, we have some incredibly great working facilities. The facility we're in with the library is great.
Well, the objective is to maintain good condition maybe, but ensure sounds a little condescending. Like, we're not sure you're doing your job right now, so we're gonna put it in the master plan.
All right, so how about maintain community facilities in condition with adequate...
Perfect.
Continue to maintain.
I'm fine with that.
And of course, the nitpicker would say if your goal is to provide high-quality services, why is your objective to provide high-quality facilities? Does facilities ensure service or vice versa?
I think so.
Because I have high quality...
It's community facilities. I think so. All right.
Okay. Do you wanna look at the hazard?
I'll list you, I'll list you.
Utilities, perfect.
That's the other one. And this was, again, this was adopted in 2017. And I know, obviously, have been significant changes with regard to the utilities in Long Hill. And that's what you'll see in green. Anyway, so sorry. And also in yellow, you'll see that I said certain things. This was done in 2017 and it was saying things should be done by January 2020, January 2018. Obviously, those days passed.
What comments do folks have with regards to the review of this, these recommendations?
And then just, you have some highlighted different colors, like on the streets of that.
Right, so the green is the stuff that I had highlighted because I thought it was outdated because it was regarding, it was pre-sale of the wastewater treatment facilities.
So your suggestion now to start?
Well, really, what my suggestion was, I gave it to Samantha and she suggested, actually, that we keep recommendation 1.1.4. Let me just see what her comment was on 1.1.3. But she actually, and I have to talk to Deb about this, but she thought maybe the township engineer should weigh in. It's up to you.
If you don't have anything to say, then don't say it. That's my reaction to this recommendation.
Which one's...
I mean, this is obviously carryover from some prior study. If you go look at the late 2006, 2007, 2008 Rutgers Blaustein study of downtown Long Hill, they said this public works is just fine, leave it where it is. That's as authoritative as a recommendation as you're ever gonna get from anybody. I don't know why we keep belaboring it. Marking it in green, marking it in pink.
But that was the last element. We're on the utility element now. This is, that's different. So, I mean...
Extend wastewater service to areas of township.
Yeah, we're on recommendation 1.1.3.
And in the utilities. And these are what's in the adopted utility element that is on the website from 2017.
I'm struggling with sewer. I'm struggling with stormwater. Yeah, these are some things that are, so where does wastewater fill in?
Well, I think it mattered when the township was running the system. And so that's where I was more thought, of course, these are gonna come out, but maybe there's some other recommendation that should go in its place. That's really why they're highlighted.
And wastewater, just help me, what are my photos?
Wastewater is like when you flush your toilet.
Right, so that's a sewer?
Yes.
Right, right. So that's now, that's a bigger subject than this because of all the consequences of a van, lifting a van and all that stuff.
Exactly.
If this is just a consequence here, that's a justice more important. It should be spoken about. I'm trying to remember where else it's spoken about. Sewer.
It's really only spoken about here in this element. So if there are updates or anything that should be changed to what's been adopted, then please tell me and we'll make the change.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure where else do we talk about sewer? Because we talked about affordable housing and all that good stuff.
Yeah.
It's such a big subject.
Right.
Is this in any case we talked about it?
I believe so.
Hmm, I think we need to do more justice.
But they're saying expand this element or are we talking about maybe just...
I'm trying to understand what extend wastewater services means in relation to the features. It's about the sewer ban and need to provide a combination to support affordable housing and all that other stuff. So this is one sentence so benign for either, we talk about elsewhere, we don't need it here, or we expand upon it into something that's more comprehensive than this.
Right, because we can't expand until the treatment plant starts. Right, because we can't expand until the treatment plant starts, build the capacity. And we don't know what that time looks like.
So, I mean, the way I look at it, these two recommendations are still valid.
Yeah, but it's not just, sorry, Don, it's not just where practice will need to be feasible.
We should be working with American Water to come up with a comprehensive plan to how it's going to expand the sewer system to the residents.
Does the township work on that, or?
But why should we be working with the Jersey American? Like, they won't, they're responsible for everything, we're not responsible for it.
Don?
Yes, please.
I'd like to address Tom's remark about American Order. Just like to remind you that American Order is a contractual obligation to re- get their plant re-licensed for greater capacity, so they can cure the sewer ban. And in order to do that, they're going to have to do something to the plant, and that's going to require a site plan coming to this board, and that'll happen sooner or later, and I don't see that it's a master plan issue. I think it's a site plan issue, they're going to have to expand the plant, and they've got the land to do it. Why do we have to make that a master plan issue?
Well, as I said, these were what was in the plan, so I think what we should do is take them out, because they no longer apply.
Exactly.
I would agree.
Okay. I just, sorry.
Sure, yeah. That's fine, no, it's good to highlight what we had in there, so we don't forget. But that, I think alleviates a lot of the discussion.
Then the other thing that was on page two, that was in yellow, was an addition about wireless telecommunications facilities, that they be co-located. Again, this may really not be, it's the next page?
1.1.1.2.
It's, it's...
I don't have that, hey, hey.
Other side, other side.
Does it fit on the other side?
No, okay, okay.
Well, I'll read it. Where new wireless telecommunications facilities are required, there should be co-located, or they should be co-located on existing buildings and structures such as utility transmission towers. A new tower or monopole is necessary because of radio frequency requirements, it should be capable of accommodating additional carriers, so as to limit the number of towers within Long Hill.
Is this part of community facilities?
No.
We're on utility element.
Oh, you switched on, I can't find it.
We've been in utilities for the last twenty minutes.
It's about consolidating.
Yeah.
As opposed to putting up a bunch of independent.
That's all this is.
I like that.
It's consolidation.
It's just encouraging, because I mean, that's also kind of a no-brainer.
Right, right.
I agree, I don't want to see as many few towers. I want to see as few towers as possible.
Absolutely.
Are they still making them look like trees?
Yes, yes.
Which, a tree like, I don't know what world.
Stand twenty feet above the top of the tree line.
If I can, if I can get, I'm sorry, I'm back on the glass one, 1.12?
Yes, that's the one I just read.
Okay, that's, first of all, the next cellular facility in Long Hill will be a standalone monopole. I know where it's going to be. It's just going to take a while for it to happen, and I don't think that the master plan is in a position to second-guess the technology of radio transmission.
I don't mind taking it out, I think we probably should, just because there are so many regulations with wireless technology that are at the federal level, there's not a lot you can do at the local level. So I think it's, I don't know.
What we should do, I'd say, in the master plan, and this is open for debate, is should we classify cellular carriers as utilities, and thus make them conditional uses in all zones, so that they're, or whatever it is, yeah, so that we don't have to have the board get involved in every cellular issue, when they don't get involved in any of the other utility issues. That's, that's a master plan decision, is to stop regulating cellular at the local level. Do you want to put that in the plan or not?
I don't have a sense of how much control we have to begin with, at the local level.
Well, there's a fifty million dollar job replacing all the towers on the PSCNG right away, that never came before a board, because it's a utility, and yet the antennas on one of those towers came before the zoning board three times, because we regulate the cellular, but not the tower that it's hung on. So, do we want to make cellular a utility, and stop trying to pretend we regulate it? I mean, we increased the size, the height of the towers in town by an average of fifty feet, and yet we argued with the cellular carrier, because he wanted to put his tower his antennas fifty foot higher than they were. Because the tower is now taller than it used to be. We can make a binary planning decision here, to stop pretending to regulate cellular, since we really can't do much about it anyway.
What we're saying is make it capable of additional carriers. We're not saying high height in our location. Just say if you build it, consider future use of it. Is that something we have an opinion on, or can have an opinion?
I mean, I, yes, I've seen this in other areas, you can have an opinion for sure. I mean, I think what Dennis is saying, it's a question, I'm not sure the answer to be honest, which is, should these come for site review? Um, because if you don't, then if something goes up in your backyard, it's going up, and it never went before a board, you've never had an opportunity to speak on it.
We've got thirty-inch transcontinental gas mains in people's backyards in this town. I mean, they're there, and you can't do anything about it, they're working hard at six hundred PSI of natural gas, and it's a public utility. It is what it is.
Are they around them? Yeah, it's different.
Why is it different?
Because there's an aesthetic issue of what you're seeing when you look at your backyard.
They cut down trees two hundred feet wide on either side of the gas pipeline. Don't tell me that's not an aesthetic issue?
I would, I think they're different, I do think they're different. But, yeah.
So what's it, what's it, is another town having this?
I mean, I'll take a look, because I do will say, I agree with Dennis, when he's came before the zoning board, it was sort of like, you, you, okay.
But did it give us any leverage to say, hey, come on? No, think about this stuff.
Yeah. Let me, let me get back to you.
I put an asterisk on that, because, I mean, the other way that could be worded is if we could encourage it, but again, if we're having absolutely no effect, and it's just bogging down the process of approvals and time and effort, I would be in favor of just removing and going along with making it a utility.
And I would argue that the last sentence here, capable of accommodating additional carriers, so as to limit the number of towers within Long Hill, that is absolutely unlawful to tell the owner of a property who he must accept as a tenant, and that's what this amounts to. One guy builds a tower, and everybody wants to use it or doesn't want to use it, the competitors, but he can't be put under an obligation to lease to his competitors.
Yeah, that's what the language should means, it's a should, it's a preference, it's not a shall. But let me just look into this, because I think it warrants a little more research.
And I find if there are cases where I assume this situation occurs, it's not, it's not somebody squashing somebody's pole, right? I assume there are some legitimate situations where carrier A will come to carrier B.
Have you seen it come up in other towns and historic districts? That's, you know, where, for example, a private church may want to put a cell tower in their steeple, and everybody goes berserk, and they challenge it. I, I, I just don't know how much this really has in the...
That's what I'm, I'm sure there's a little.
Okay, thanks, thanks. All right, so we'll follow up. Good comments, thank you.
I have comments on two point, on 1.1.8 and 1.1.9.
Okay, okay.
And we're now talking about utilities.
Yeah, yeah.
All, and in the utilities element, we're suddenly talking about stormwater. That's not a utility. And continue to support ordinances, what are the alternatives?
No, that, I mean, listen, these are what you adopted in 2017. If you don't like them now, we can make them out. I have no, I'm no worst.
I want a plan that's really a plan.
All right, I mean, I don't know why they're in 2017, and now you don't want them, but I can take them out, I have no problem doing that.
I mean, in the future, I mean, this is a potential consideration. Other towns are considering creating a stormwater utility. I don't think it's applicable for this town, because you don't have enough commercial property to consider it, but stormwater utilities are a way to offset costs with regards to infrastructure. So...
It's another form of taxation, like the horse-based tax.
Of course it is. It's called the rain tax. And it's very, it's being used, but I'm not suggesting that that's applicable, but I think we could extract out any of the applicable stormwater things, Liz, and just bring them into the conservation element or whatever.
And the rain tax applies only to businesses?
Yes, yes.
And those are the non-voters who get to pay for the rain tax, that they can't vote for the people who've adopted it. This is a good scheme, we should have more of this.
All right, the only one, I will say Samantha, I believe, added, because I don't, is the updating ordinances to reflect the current standards for wetlands, flood hazard areas, storm management.
So I think we would make sure that's in the conservation element, or the land use element. Land use element.
1.1.9, take that out, I don't know how that got in there, but the planning board is not in a position to talk about the aesthetics of traffic light control boxes. The beautification committee attempted to do that early this year, and discovered that the artistic plastic wrapper that you shraparound the box costs a thousand bucks a piece, and the beautification committee didn't know where that money would come from, so they gave up on the concept. Clearly, this board is not in a position to regulate what those control boxes look like.
Do you know what though, actually, because this came up with the lead, it's coming up more, are the water, the huge, whatever you call it?
Hot box.
The hot boxes. And not that we can actually design those, but we could have, say, you know, there should be some recommendations for landscaping or shielding, you know, when they, when they come on.
To soften aesthetics.
And it doesn't have to go here, go on land use, but I think that way we should include that, because that's something a little newer, it's not a lot of ordinance.
Well, if it's, if it's on the site plan, we don't need formal notification, because the site plan will show the hot box, and will deal with it as a site plan matter.
Yeah.
But this says, any formal notification and traffic control equipment, and that just doesn't work. The county's not going to ask us for permission to put in a traffic light.
That's coming out, but I think, let's move forward to the, to the hot boxes. I think, I mean, you have regulations about screening generators, and that, you know, I think you should do it with the hot box.
Generators are noise makers, that's why they're regulated, and they're regulated with regard to setback from the neighbor's property line.
I know, we don't have any control where a hot box goes, but we do have control over landscaping. I don't think there's any problem putting something.
I think it should be in the utility element, and it might have to be in the land use element too. But I think we need to...
I'm okay with restricting this to hot boxes, and as long as they're inside the property line and part of the site plan application, but let's not, let's not expand it beyond our control.
Right, that's fine.
Point made, we got it.
Okay, okay.
At 1.1.3, extend wastewater service areas, that's already under contract.
We got rid of that one, and the one underneath it, both in green have been removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And 1.1.5?
Yeah.
Relocate existing above-grade utilities below grade, wherever they are rehabilitated and renewed.
Yeah.
Who's going to pay for that?
Yeah, well, I think that that's true, it's pretty problematic, I mean, but it...
Wouldn't it be on a list for an entitlement for a developer potentially?
Yes, and so...
I spoke with the JCPN municipal liaison, and I said to her, Yolanda, how much is this going to cost, and who's going to pay for it? She said, the town's going to pay for it, and it's going to cost a lot.
No, but this is part of, it's basically a redevelopment application, is really what it is.
Yeah, but redevelopment application only covers one block, what about the neighbors?
But that's what you care, you can only do it piece by piece. That's what, I mean, you can't do the entire town, that is prohibitive, absolutely.
Well, for years, I've heard it preached that we should put all utilities underground at Easton Valley Road, and that could be done.
But it costs a lot of money, so I think...
It costs a lot of money.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's going to, and it would cost either the town, or the, well, I don't see how the developer could even, he has to pay for it.
But it did on some development, some has been done.
Yeah, if, I think the lead project, those utilities are...
I don't see what to say to it.
I mean, I would ideally like to see the utilities underground, I would like to see Verizon pull all their dead cables off the line, the pole lights. Because when Verizon's got five, six, seven cables on the same pole, you know that some of them are dead.
Yeah.
I mean, this ties even into climate mitigation strategies too. Pre-flying around and stuff like that, so. I don't have a problem with leaving that one in, I think that one is helpful.
But I understand what you're saying, we're not advocating that it be done for the entire township all at once. It's sort of where it's possible to put the cost on to the redevelopment or the developer, it should be done.
So maybe we just add that modifier in there, in regards to making sure it's development specific.
Now, the situation where this will arise next is in Millington, because the prison teeth of development is surrounded by aerial cables, both telephone and power, that are probably going to have to go underground for aesthetic purposes. But we didn't talk about that in the twelve here, did we, Helen? And I certainly don't know whether prisons would be prepared to pay to put those lines underground, but inevitably, they don't show up on the earliest rendering of what that's going to look like from the street. I don't, I don't know where this element, where this recommendation takes us, that's my, that's my concern.
I think if there are any full-scale types of redevelopment, or perhaps, let's just say, prisons in the future were to come back for some sort of site plan?
No, I mean, the recommendation is to make a modification, so it doesn't appear that our recommendation is town-wide. So, that's, yeah, well, we kind of say that wherever we, but, yeah, yeah, I think we got it.
At 1.1, objective 1.1, ensure the proper management of various utility systems in the township. I think that that's the responsibility of the VPU. I'm not sure how we can ensure that the telephone lines are properly retained, or managed. And I'm not sure that we would have any luck going after the VPU to ask them to ensure. I think this is far beyond the scope of municipal authority.
Why don't we say advocate for the proper management? And if there becomes an issue in the township, you're, you know, you'll advocate for it.
Right, we're at the local level, the utility isn't going to offer to do different things.
Every now and then, when we have an extended power failure, the power company comes in and puts new fuses and new switches in their distribution. That's about as far as it goes to ensure... That's about as far as it goes to ensure, uh, the, uh, proper management. And I think they've probably gone about as far as they can in segmenting the town, and we still have massive outbursts.
Alright, let's, let's try to focus on then, how, what would be your recommended modification to that, the wording of objective one point one?
I just take out the word insure and then rewrite the rest of it to, to what's within our scope, which is keep a close eye on it and talk to people.
You said that, right?
I said advocate, I could say monitor to insure. You don't like the word.
How about monitor?
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine.
Alright.
And one point, one point two is a example of setting a bad example.
Okay, this is in your plan currently, so if you want to take it out, that's fine. I, I don't even, to be honest, totally understand.
Well, this talks about outdoor illumination, which minimize the inbound area duration, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, by actual count, the lights on the soccer field next door are seventy, seven zero times brighter than our ordinance permits. But the town can put up as much lighting as it wants to without having to come to board for approval of, under the lighting ordinance. And so they did, and it's seventy, seven zero times brighter. Now, they're very well designed. They don't splash across the street. They, they, they turn on and off only when they're required, but nonetheless, they are important for the safety, security, and well-being of the soccer players. So I would like to avoid a blanket statement here. Maybe, comma, except the town can do anything it wants to where its athletic fields.
It does say, shall, should. I mean, it doesn't say should. It says embrace.
It says, well, we, you know, persons in case.
I don't see why, how this is interest to what we're doing.
I, I would think that the Myersville ball field has got the same lighting as it now.
Are those lights on yet?
I haven't seen them on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they played a game there, right? Yep, yep, they played a game. Yeah, I haven't seen the lights on yet, but, but that, that happened.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Are they being complicated in the way it's expressed?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not.
Do you want to soften that in the word? So, so it's normal planning, do you think?
But I could, let me just add, is, is the goal to sort of, uh, I hate using the word embrace, dark sky, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Emphasize, you want a dark sky.
Advocate is another good word.
An advocate for that, unless you're in this position where, um, you know, it is.
A safety, a safety, security.
Safety, security, that kind of thing, yeah, yeah.
So that would be maybe a better way to win it. Alright.
Tom, Tom.
Utilities, okay. Um, next, what would you like to tackle?
Um, do you want to do, have a vote?
And do you stay?
Okay, we could do that. It's one page.
Which one, which one?
The hazard mitigation.
Um, it's the hazard mitigation, which is.
So it is, well, it's, it's a section to go into or incorporate into the land use element called the hazard mitigation section.
It's, and it begins with goal three. It's just one page, and we have looked at this when we looked at the land use, but, um, we augmented some things.
And this is kind of, this is consistent with the new law, correct? I mean, that, this is kind of being driven by the hazard vulnerability assessment and all that.
Right, we have to have this in the land use element, but, um, you know, there are certain things that we added, um, since the last time we looked at the land use element, that we should perhaps discuss. Um, and specifically, it, I think, three point, one point four and three point, one point five, and, uh, all the way through to objective three point two.
Alright, well, I assume everybody's had a chance to review. Mr. Sandau.
Three point, one point two. Those who fail to read history are doomed to repeat it. Back in the late nineteen nineties, a member of this planning board, Dr. Lynn Hudson, who was also chairman of the environmental commission, got together with his buddies and created the ten towns.
Yeah, we all know about that history, so what's your point?
My point is, your, one, three point, one point two is reinventing the ten towns committee, which lived for ten years, did its job, and disbanded. Now you want to recreate it?
This was, uh, this was something that was discussed with the township committee, and it's something of interest.
Well, why does this sound so much like the ten towns committee? Which did everything that you're suggesting this new committee should do and disbanded because, and the reason it disbanded was because the ten towns and the two counties decided that the time was ended for them to continue their contribution to fund this committee.
This is purely a volunteer group. I don't know what funding the other committee had, but this is purely a group to provide shared best management practices as it concerns stormwater management.
And, and, and then, given, given, um, how crucial stormwater management is to the development of this town as we move forward, uh, this is a committee, I think, that is going to approach it from a region-wide perspective, and it's something that we've been fairly myopic, I think, and, and, and looking at, looking at one whole township in a, in, in isolation. And this is something that, you know, I think that we, that we have to, we have to, we have to stop looking at that, and we have to, uh, so not only do we get best practices, but also whenever we actually move towards, you know, potentially getting federal funding, which we are actually going to need to get, if we can do it as, as, as a group or as a, as a, as a region, then we are, we're, we're, we make a much stronger case, and we can hopefully, uh, for one, you know, once and for all, um, solve or very, very, very mitigate the issues, and then really open up the town to the economic development and the.
You're asking me to buy into the dream that a bunch of volunteer politicians are going to be able to get together and solve the problem that professionals have been unable to solve, and that a bunch of those politicians ten years ago killed the flood wall, which might have actually been a solution, and that, and that these volunteers are ultimately going to bring in their paid-out engineers to do the figuring out of what has to be done, so it's not a volunteer activity anymore.
I don't think, I don't think that's necessarily true. It's certainly one characterization of it then, but, but it's certainly not the way that we're visiting it. And if you don't have, uh, if you don't have those elected officials, you characterize them as volunteers, but they're elected officials. They do have a duty to the, uh, uh, towns and townships that elect them to solve the problems that are, um, most crucial to those townships. And so they're not just volunteers, they're elected officials. They have a, they have a, they have a, a duty, and, and, and this is, somebody has to take the lead in, in putting this together. And, you know, I, I think, I think Don, I, I think Don For has, uh, uh, the way that he's kind of taken up, um, the baton here to, to move this forward. And, and it's, it's the only way that I can see that we do something here. And so, and so I'm, I'm, I'm very much in favor of it.
I, I one hundred percent stand behind that. If we just deal with it at a Long Hill township level, all we're doing is passing a problem down the line. The same's going to happen upstream. If we come together as a group, we look at it as a group, we can pull our resources together, we deal with the problem as a whole, not just an individual, everyone benefits. If we, if we make a corrective action and we don't, and we don't talk to our neighbors, they're going to feel some ramification. And who knows, maybe the wall wasn't the right answer to, uh, to correct the problem. Maybe that would have corrected our problem, but it would cause a problem somewhere else. So the best thing to do is bring these groups together, have the conversation, and look at it as a cohesive unit. So I stand behind that.
And what happens if towns did form and we didn't participate?
That would be pretty bad, right?
I wouldn't feel particularly good about that.
Yeah, we'd be building boats.
Right, right. So they could shut it all down all the way.
He'd be a base of a boat.
Yeah, right, right.
Alright.
Okay, any other comments on, uh, climate vulnerability related issues?
Uh, I have a comment on, uh, three point, two point one. This is more of a question. Do we really need to update the zoning ordinance to reflect state mandates on electric vehicle charging? I mean, this is a, uh, this is a strange situation. We prohibit gas stations, but we're going to put in an ordinance that you have to have electric charging stations?
Well, we, we didn't, the state did, and they adopted zoning, and so actually Long Hill was, or has already adopted the zoning. You may not realize it, but every town was, was essentially forced to adopt a model ordinance. Not, you didn't have to take any specific action. It's just you didn't oppose it within a certain amount of time, you adopted it. And so the idea here was to actually just get it in your ordinance so it's clear, that you know about it, and anybody who's doing development here, although they probably already do know about it, but that it's, it's clear.
So you actually want us to put words into the ordinance?
There is an ordinance.
Over and above the reference to the statute that's already there?
Is there, is there reference to the statute in the ordinance?
I don't think so.
Why, why wouldn't that be good enough? Why do we have to repeat everything?
I'm unaware if they do. Do they? Is there a reference currently?
I thought we had one.
Are you sure?
And I'm not sure.
Okay, it would have happened last year.
I don't recall hearing about that.
But nonetheless, it's incumbent upon an applicant to know about statutes and deal with it with the, over and above the ordinance, isn't it?
Yeah, but it, it's like you have this ordinance that is adopted, but it's not in your books, so why not just put it in your books?
Yeah, right, right. And how about, how about the township fits some in here?
Well, that's later, we have that later. But it's, it, personally, I find it confusing because the state did adopt this, that a lot of towns don't realize that they have this regulation.
But we will still prohibit gas stations.
Excellent, excellent.
And we will still prohibit service stations, so you can't get your, either your gas or your electric vehicle repaired in town.
Yeah, um, but, but, you know, electric vehicle charging, charging stations have to go at the family developments. Um, they have to go at, at larger, um, commercial developments.
But promoting renewable energy resources, not talking about gas stations. I, I don't disagree with the point on gas stations. For this particular point, what's wrong with this particular point? Nothing. There's nothing wrong with this particular point. There's other things around it that we can address elsewhere, but gas stations, sure. That's, that's, that's not under this particular subject.
No, not the gas station. I mean, the EV stations aren't necessarily a gas station, right? They're, they're, they're everywhere.
Renewable energy resources.
But this was just so people are aware of it, including board members.
Well, here's the tricky, I mean, I mean, one way with this, uh, uh, promote renewable energy resources. Is electric charging stations or whatever renewable, as such.
Okay, let, let get into the whole.
So that's, that's.
I mean, it, it is considered by the state. Let's, let's go on that, because we could go for an hour debating.
As long as it's a state.
The power plant that creates the electric is really renewable.
Exactly. Everything is, 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 as long as it's the language as far as the state, fine.
But right now, the state is considering these things, climate mitigation strategies, by encouraging electric vehicle use.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're not, we're not promoting windmills.
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's where it starts.
There's two things, solar, look at the solar, right, and the EV charges. The two things.
Okay, okay. Alright, so we're very specific on what we're looking at as far as.
Absolutely. Put windmills, hundred, hundred fifty foot windmills on the, on the, might as well with the utility line they put in, might as well put a windmill on top of it.
It's even bigger than those blades.
Makes that four hundred feet high.
Yeah, let's not go there with windmills.
That's, um, that's three point, two point two is, it, it, windmill, uh, wind turbines are omitted from three point, two point two, and I don't understand why.
Um, I, I did that specifically because I thought that they weren't necessarily feasible here in Long Hill. I thought solar was.
Oh, we got, we got a, a, a hilltop. It's called Long Hill. You can put wind turbines up there for six to seven miles.
Is it, is it a realistic possibility?
Sure. And you could put, and you could put cell antennas, cell antennas on top of them.
We'll, we'll, we'll reassemble the jetport committee that fought the jetport in the great swamp before the, that's fine.
But solar is a very realistic thing, and there are standards in the MLUL, and the township should, should consider where else they might want to permit them.
And, and I understand that wind turbines actually require a fairly large plot of land and connectivity to the grid, and they're probably impractical in most of Long Hill.
Right, right.
Although that's not to say that in Myersville, we have the power lines to make a connection, running the PSCG line, which is recently upgraded, we got the hilltops, we got the large parcels.
So we could say be open to opportunities for wind turbines.
No, no.
But, but with regard to solar in three point, two point two, there's a parenthetical here, which I assume that Liz inserted. Regulations should ensure that existing tree cover is protected. Well, duh, drive a stake in the ground. Tell me what's more important, solar power or trees?
Oh, you know what? I didn't add, this is, I mean, this was this language that came out of some other.
Yes, I'm sure. It, it continues to be the uncertain compromise. We want trees and we want solar power. Which is more important? Drive a stake in the ground. This is the plan for Long Hill.
Well, no, 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 sorry. Okay, so this was clear. What this is, is what you can do in your plan is encourage where you wouldn't mind having solar fields, for example. Like, at one point in their work, has a lot of warehouses, so it's, it, their math plan says they want them on the roofs. And that's okay. We don't have that here, but you might have, let's say, the Valley Mall parking area.
Or the rooftops on Valley Mall.
And if you're not getting rid of trees, you're actually going in.
You're avoiding the issue, which is when a resident wants to save money in his power bill by putting solar on his roof, and he wants to cut the trees, he's faced with a municipal conundrum that we don't know what's more important. Let's put it in the plan.
Okay, no, no, alright. So I think maybe what I'm, what I would say though, is in terms of where you want large solar arrays, you probably want them in areas that have already been developed.
Yes, and most likely.
I don't recall that any owner of a large property has come in and asked for a solar array.
Well, no, they, they, they might not, but their solar companies come in and then they lease the parking area from the property owner, and they're, it's two different entities.
We're not talking about this applying to residential solar on some.
Yeah, but I think we should, because that's where solar development is going, is on rooftops and residential neighborhoods.
Understood, Dennis, but on this again, we're saying, we're not developing this in the plan. We're saying, consider adopting an ordinance, so that would be work toward answering these questions.
What would the ordinance say?
I don't know. We have, have considered it.
Uh, uh, we give a coverage bonus if you put in solar?
No.
How do we incent, how do we incent a business applicant to put in solar unless he has already found that there's an economic reason for it?
Right, but I, I think what, what they're two separate, what I would actually recommend is that the recommendations should be broken into. And you have, you do, I think, want to encourage, uh, if solar comes in, you do want it to be on your already improved areas. Because you don't want somebody, if there are whole-scale places where they could, you don't want that. You'd rather have a parking lot, right? I'm assuming. And then the second thing, the next recommendation might be how to, um, have regulations for single-family owners or small business owners. Um, so, you know, that we're, that it's consistent with the state regulations and, um, would be beneficial to, you know, but it's, you can't make a, a single-family resident do it.
Yeah, I agree with this. Just what you said about, right, right.
Yeah, but I would run it up by putting, uh, existing tree cover in.
No, but what I'm saying is, let's, let's break it up and say, well, where, where, what that is referring. No, but what I'm saying is, let's, let's break it up and say, well, where, what that is referring to really is these larger arrays, not single family homes.
You're talking about the land farm solar, where you're putting, you know, ten acres of solar, which is not gonna happen here.
Then this recommendation is not clear as to what it's referring to.
No, so that's why I'm suggesting that it be broken into, so it's a little bit clearer.
Okay, okay.
Or just one. And we find, we find the one and just keep it as you said.
But I still think they need a section on to resolve the issue of solar versus trees in residential neighborhoods.
Why?
Put a stake in the ground so that it doesn't become an arguable issue, especially since the town keeps putting up more and more tree cutting ordinances.
Well, but our, so explain to me what the issue is, because if they're going on rooftop, you mean people are cutting their trees back, so that this.
My neighbor cut twenty good sized trees in order to put solar on his roof, because he needed to get solar, uh, southern sun exposure, and the trees were in the way. And we're now approaching the season when the sun is lower in the sky, which means you need more clearance for your trees. The trees in this town are much taller than their thirty five foot high roofs. And so you gotta cut trees if you're gonna, if you're gonna keep solar going during the winter. And, and I have said that from the minute that solar became economically viable, we need to drive a stake in the ground, and we need to decide whether this town will make it easy to cut trees in order to.
Maybe we should, but the thing is that you can't cut trees without, you just need to sell out a permit. That's it. I mean, there's no prohibition on cutting trees.
Yeah, but there is, if you're, if you're building a new house and have to go to a board, they're gonna be climbing all over you to plant new trees and so on.
So why not consult the shade tree to help us get an answer there, to putting a stake in the ground? I think both are important. Solar is important, trees are important, so we have to find a balance. Some people are gonna have, some people are gonna have more tree coverage than other people on their properties. And some are not feasible to get, have trees taken down because of where they're living on the side of a hill. They're just, maybe they're on the north side of a hill, and they just never get the southern light. That's where they live, they chose to live. So it's almost like a case by case in some instances.
Yeah, well, again, the solar developer is going to evaluate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it's feasibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but, but I think we can take this up as we look to develop this order.
As you develop it, I would get the shade tree in.
Yeah, I mean, again, all great points, but I think it goes beyond.
Let's go.
Let's go. What we're trying to do here. You are.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So what would you like to add to?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't cut the trees.
They're not gonna want the trees cut.
Right, right.
All the way to time will have to do.
Right, right.
And my, my final point in this section is three point one point six. What does emergency management procedures have anything to do with land use?
Well, I mean, you could say what is, I mean, this is the issue, that now that you have to put the mitigation, hazard mitigation in land use, is that there are certain things about hazard mitigation that are land use related, and then there are these other things which aren't necessarily. Um, for example, I mean, like flood proofing critical facilities. I, I think that's a decent recommendation, but maybe it goes in community facilities.
But we're addressing a particular theme within land use, so I would just leave. Just to keep it in place as a focus, as we're supposed to do, right? As part of a, so you're saying, otherwise we just have like one management decision.
That's true. The other thing is Samantha brought this up under three point one point one, is that the county has mitigation, has a mitigation plan, and they have a forty page chapter on Long Hill. Um, and so she was saying, should we put in some of these issues? And I can, um, I can look at those, uh, and get those for your next test.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Yeah.
That'd be interesting.
And a lot of the, um, money filtering down to counties and municipalities from the federal government is gonna be seeking to help to implement a lot of these.
This town can't even get the county to fix up the police radio systems that we're paying for.
Yeah, but that, that shouldn't now avoid this from a goal of plans.
Yeah, but that's, that's specifically mentioned, three one six, emergency communications planning. I mean, what more can we do than the pain and agony we've been going through for the past year over the shortfalls? I mean, what's the purpose of a plan that's just can't take us anywhere with the county government?
No, actually, I mean, the, that part is probably, that's all in our, that's all in our, uh, uh, hands here. Uh, what we need to do in order to supplement the county system. County has, yeah, I've been very clear, they said so. They told us exactly what we're getting into and what they would do. And they've actually done a little bit more than they said they would do, but it's all local, uh, and to make that.
It only took ten years to get there.
Well, well, we're, I mean, we're here now, but it, it's like, we, you know, we have to do something about it, but it's all at the local level.
So you go with this then? Update emergency systems, substitutions?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would actually, I mean, I never would do it tonight, but I'd actually have some ideas of what we have to do locally to make that system better, and, and I do believe it should be part of the process.
It should be.
Well, I think, listen, we welcome your input regards to how we can put that in. That's great. So while we're making out of that, listen, we'll get some information from Brendan of the emergency operations. Planning.
And are we, are we consulting the, um, emergency management team here in Long Hill? Right, right? Is, is, are they, are they not tasked with doing that?
Well.
No, not that.
Not, not that.
Maybe not communication, right? So this talks about this should include emergency communication, but I'm talking more general, more broader, updating the emergency operations plan.
And, and they do that.
On an annual basis, right?
Yep, yep, yep. Every, every agency says.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's.
Things changing, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So should we keep that in, then, update emergency operations?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, I think, I think Brendan's talking about possibly expanding. Maybe there could be some sub recommendations.
That's great.
I also wanna make sure we're giving people better response to that.
Right, right. And this gets tacked on again to the land use element, so this is gonna be. This is part of the required element. Up front, so. Okay?
Yeah, can I ask one question? I don't wanna bully anybody, but, but do you have a tree, uh, ordinance or whatever, like a prohibiting the amount of trees? And you know, if you take down so many trees, you have to prohibit it?
We have an ordinance, but not, not to that level.
You have to get a permit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to get a permit, but you don't, it's not like, okay, you take three trees down, you gotta put three back or something like that.
For residential property, we don't have that. If it's town property, you cut down trees, then there's a replacement. Yeah, yeah, but.
That's in town, right? Right, if the tree is in the town.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we have that, but nothing for the, for the resident. You can cut down as many trees as you like.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
What?
I have a couple of big, very big, very dead ash trees in my yard. And, and before I cut them down, I'm gonna have to come to town hall, hat in hand, and fill out a whole lot of paperwork and prove that this tree was a tree.
I, I just did it today. I, I just removed a large dead ash tree, and I thought, it was amazing. It was amazing. It was minimal paperwork, it was a fine experience. I cut that too, I cut that too.
I've got a big one, I just made the smallest, not cut it.
Well, my intention.
Yeah, yeah, but guys, let's, let's, let me come back to order here. You sent us on a tailspin. Liz sent us on a tailspin. Yes, we have, we have a system. All right, we, I, I think in the hour that we're in, I don't know if it's worth tackling anything further. Uh, because getting into something will just be getting into just a, so I, I, so what we still have left is the sustainability and conservation.
Sustainability and conservation, which the board has not seen. I mean, I mean, you have copies, but we haven't reviewed them ever.
For calibration purposes, folks, at the next meeting, we're gonna have a, uh, we're gonna have an application, which is fairly straightforward and shouldn't take much more than an hour, and then we'll have a couple of hours after that to work on, uh, after plan again, if you wanna carry her into this town.
What's the application?
Okay, in that case, what's left on the agenda for tonight?
What's the application?
For handicap ramp, correct? Associated with the business?
Say again?
They're asking about the nature of the application in the next, for the next meeting.
Uh, it's a, uh, uh, professional office on Main Avenue, dentist, wheelchair ramp.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, have you got that stuff posted yet, Deborah?
No, I can send it out this week if we have to post it.
Would you please?
Shut, shut.
She should, she should have a notice in the paper this week.
I believe that's the plan, yep, yep.
So therefore, it should be available on the website by Thursday.
Fine, just wanted to know.
Great, great.
Yeah, did we, did we renew, um, dates till twenty fifth?
Yes, yes, October.
Just your, like, on purposes, I can enter that night, so, so I don't know how to remember.
Well, I, I think based on the meeting, that I, when I watched the meeting, I think they were not a hundred percent sure they're going forward on that, because the engineer's not available.
Yeah, that's true.
So, in all likelihood, I think they're probably gonna be carrying, but, but we needed to get a date on calendar.
To carry.
Just email me and remind me.
I will, I will. And I can always, like, listen and vote, and I, I will.
Of course, of course. Of course, of course.
And what, what, could I just ask what other applications are in queue kind of over the next couple of months? Just in regards to seeing what we have meeting availability.
In the queue is probably going to be assisted living facility next to Walz.
Okay, okay.
Currently.
And that would be, you think, Novemberish or?
Well, that's on the board, when you, I mean, um.
You're really trying to find a spot for this, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to, again, I think by November, we would be in a position to start discussing draft, sex actions, just getting feedback and.
I anticipate the application to be coming in, um, probably next week officially. We would still need to, the, the board professionals still need to review, we'll still need to have a technical review meeting with them. So that, I figure, let's say, end of October. I don't see them getting on the board before December, if I, if we've received the application.
Okay, that's part of, that would work out well.
So if, if, but if master plan is still priority, we can always push them to January instead of, you know.
Deborah, you say next to Walgreens, you mean, off the city, we use that as.
The right side, so.
Right inside the.
Yeah, if I'm looking at Walgreens, it's on the right, and then there's, yeah, yeah.
That's right, from the corner there?
Yes, yes.
Assistant living there?
Assistant living, yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, and then, I, well, I think there's one coming in for the car wash thing, too.
Well, yeah, that one. Okay, as long as it's not a hotel, non-stable hotel.
Extended.
Extended.
Not to my knowledge. As far as I know, they're both, as far as I both know, they're both assistant.
You know, although someone did make a, a strong argument of why.
No, in fact, that's my, um, I have to shout, because I think we're just about at the end of the extension. They, they may be withdrawing on the.
Okay, I see the meeting back to you, Dennis. Anything else?
I, we just got a couple of little items to mop up, one of which is the minutes of the September thirteenth meeting. Uh, you all got copies of this from the board secretary? Does anybody have any additions or corrections before we vote?
The only thing I had to think, I didn't think it was clear on our extended stay hotel comment on the minutes, right? I don't, I don't have the minutes in front of me.
Okay, so I, I don't, I'll take it.
Deborah, on the minutes, did we say anything about this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't think, I just quickly looked, I didn't think I saw anything.
Um, I didn't, I mean, I didn't say anything specifically in, but what I did put in was Liz's letter, so.
Yeah, we had, we had removed extended stay towels.
Yeah, it's there, there.
We should read us off for assisted living facilities, continuing care, residential, blah, blah, blah. Increase the maximum height to, right, right. So it's in there.
Does anybody have any additions or corrections to these minutes? Not a discussion of the discussion that we discussed two weeks ago.
We're good.
No, we're confirming whether that provision is in the minutes, and it's confirmed to be in the minutes. I make a motion to accept the minutes.
So move.
All in favor?
I am.
David, David.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other committee report that you would like to give at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to just give a brief update with regards to the PRISM project. Uh, I did visit the Nuland, uh, PRISM project, just to get a consensus of what, um, what they're designing, what they're building, based off the, um, comment from the residents. So I took a series of pictures, they have two different kinds of, uh, buildings on the, um, on the property. Um, and it's worth, uh, taking that back to the PRISM committee. I'll share the pictures with Brendan, I'll share the pictures with Alan, uh, and so that way we can further our conversation.
Thank you, thank you.
Will we see drawings for final approval soon?
No, no. No, no. We still have to talk to PRISM.
No, I mean, you know, it's, it's months, years.
Years.
Let me know when the wastewater plant will be ready for expansion, and I'm sure we'll be a year in front of that.
I mean, right now, that expansion, it has to be done contractually by, I think it's probably like three and a half years.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're out at the moment.
The beauty with that is it allows us good time to really look at the PRISM project, take into account, um, what we've seen at the Dullin project, uh, have the conversation with PRISM, take feedback from the residents, and hopefully somewhere we can find, uh, a common ground on what the property will look like, what the buildings will look like. I will say, we're probably not gonna get everything that everybody wants, but hopefully everybody comes to the table with a consensus that we're trying to meet common ground, and that's the objective.
What was your sense of the problem, Darren?
So there was two styles of buildings that they had. Um, first style to me was very boxy. It looked more like a college campus. The proximity of building to building was very close. Uh, so if my car, say, is twenty feet long, um, I would say building to building is probably in the thirty to thirty five range, so that's very close. Um, they had a single parking garage and with, uh, driveway space that I thought was very tight. And it's purely my views on express, any of that stuff. The second series of buildings they were by, that they were building, um, I found much more eye appealing, much more curb appeal. Uh, and again, when we start getting into it, I'll be happy to share, uh, some PowerPoint so people could actually see it, and this committee could see it. But, but, uh, they changed a lot of the texture, they changed the depth of the building from the street, they put more gables, um, so created different lines. Um, and it had more of that, um, walkout, I don't wanna call it brownstone, because it wasn't brownstone, but a series of connecting buildings with nice eye appeal. So we know that they had, like, what, twelve buildings that they were looking at, putting on the PRISM location. Um, so I think there is room, I liked the second building much, 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 much more than the first building. Too boxy on the first building, wasn't happy with it. They also had. They also had a pool and community center there, so I did take pictures of that. Um, the pool wasn't fully built out yet, but there is a, uh, you can see where the pool is going, you can see where the patio is going, you can see the clubhouse. They also had a residential, uh, sorry, a commercial building at the front of the, as, as you gained access to the property. So when you first pulled in, you're greeted with, uh, a commercial, a single story commercial, and then you move back into the property and you start encountering the buildings. The, um, commercial, um, had a nice gable roof, uh, pitched on both sides, kinda looked like, uh, our train station, uh, which is what we were looking for, our initial discussions with, uh, PRISM. Um, so I took pictures of that as well, so I actually liked that, I kinda liked that reading as you, as you entered the property. Uh, it is off a main road, Washington Ave, they had installed a traffic light there to, uh, allow for traffic to move in and out of the property, there's only one way in, one way out of that property. Um, but, but, yeah, there's, what I liked was actually getting a tangible feel, uh, look and feel of going on to that, and I would encourage, uh, any of the board members to go and drive over there, and you can drive onto the parking, but the further you move back, you can see more of the construction being done.
With regard to the site in Millington, have they, uh, done anything about the retaining wall on Stonehouse Road? Or thinking about doing anything about?
I've not seen anything, I've not had a conversation over that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Anybody else have anything to report? Um, does the township committee, or is it, does anybody report?
Nothing to report for me.
You guys still in business?
We're, we're, we're lumping along, yes. We're in the, some business is more than others.
Just out of curiosity, what's with all the trucks over at the Millington train station park?
Oh, they're, uh.
Is that, is that part of some roadwork being done, or?
I think those are, are those transit trucks, because they've been doing work on the rail. If you look on the truck, and if you see the rail, the, the things that go on the rail, you know, because they were parked in the July train station.
But, no, they brought in a big dirt truck, and they had a front loader, and they did dirt, it's filtering out stuff. I mean, I mean, you almost don't even have access to that parking.
But there's, but there's no, there's no work being done there, right?
No, it's like a staging area.
So what I, what I believe that is the, they're staging there for work on one field, under the tracks.
Yeah, I think it is track.
Okay, 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 okay.
Because they've stored a gazillion railroad ties at the July train station.
Yeah, 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 they got them all stacked there, or they took them away finally?
No, they're still all.
Yes, that's for the, is the complete, uh, uh, New Jersey American Water Project that's done in Northfield. That's, that's why, that's why I believe they're very helpful, yeah, yeah.
Good, good. Motion to adjourn? Second to go, excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.